That is always the top of my priority list.
I'm going to ask Ms. Shay Blackwell if those out in the Chase Gallery want to join us to come in at this time. Good evening and welcome to City Council, and may I start with Happy New Year to each and every one of you. We are so excited about 2025, and with that, I'm going to start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We have quite a full night tonight, but I'd like to start with poetry at the podium, which was originally created in 2019 by Spokane poet laureate Mark Anderson, along with Spokane Arts to give local poets and poetry enthusiasts the opportunity to make their voices heard at council meetings in a unique and artful way. This opportunity reminds our community that poetry can play an important part in the civic realm. Tonight, we have Kaylee Knudsen reading Nana Bread. Kaylee, welcome down.
Thank you for having me. Okay, this is Nana Bread. The most precious gift at any Knudsen family gathering came in Saran Wrap and crinkled aluminum foil. Between kisses and hellos, knobby hands would thrust the precious package into someone's arms with a "you know what to do." Some carried the cargo like a baby, cradled in two arms a swaddled newborn. Others became running backs, tucking it into their elbow crease, hunching their shoulders as they bobbed to the end zone, a small, empty spot on a food-soaked counter. Shrieks would ensue, ecstatic joy, bargains thrown, sarcasm muttered. The package never found a proper serving plate like a delicacy should, but instead bloomed right there on the granite. Glittering silver platter of foil, crinkle wrap ripped because who knew where the plastic started or stopped? Each too desperate to care, it fluffed out a swollen heart with too much love. "The bananas were too ripe," Nana grumbled to deaf ears. No one ever sliced the whole loaf. A rite of passage: Cut your own sized slice from the middle, smother it in butter, and shovel the piece of harmoniously moist crumbling Nana Bread into your watering mouth. Not one crumb wasted. The only appropriate response was to close your eyes, hum with ecstasy as the first hit sent sweet love into your bloodstream. And just like that, you were safe. I asked her to teach me how to bake a love that lasts. She perfected the bananas, pulled out her oldest pan, and I called and canceled, quietly hoping that if she never shared her secrets, she'd have to stay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. So tonight, we are holding Community Day in honor of the Haitian Independence Month. I am proud to hold this event to recognize not only the independence of the Haitian people, but also their contributions to the city of Spokane. These Community Days are meant to highlight the diversity that we have in our city and the amazing work that people and organizations are doing. We want to express that we all belong here in Spokane and that we as a city appreciate the work that is being done by all of our residents. Tonight, we'll be hearing a proclamation from Mayor Brown, followed by a traditional Haitian song, and then a few words from Katia Jasmine, founder of the Creole Resource. Please come on down, Mayor. And who will be receiving the proclamation? Katia, is that you?
Thank you for the opportunity, Council President and Councilmembers, to read this proclamation. Thank you for the poetry, too. Just made some Nana Bread myself this weekend for the grandkids. Whereas January 1st, 1804, marks the first day Haitian people began to live in a country that was free of enslavement and colonial rule by the French government, which had colonized the land of Haiti and as a result decided to enslave and torture its people. Former Haitian slave Jean-Jacques Desalines was the man of the hour as he declared Haiti's independence, marking the country's true freedom from France, ending a longstanding revolutionary war that began in 1791, and as a result made Haiti the first free black republic and nation to abolish slavery, sparking change within other westernized countries like America, who at the time was experiencing similar practices of enslavement and colonialism. Haitians led the way forward by demonstrating the power of resilience, unity, and an unyielding pursuit of freedom that others at the time could only dream of. And whereas today we celebrate the ingenuity, unity, hope, resilience, hard work, community, and creativity of the Haitian people, many of whom have decided to call Spokane Washington home and who have much to offer our great community, we acknowledge and celebrate Haitian Independence Day and month in Spokane because it grants us the privilege to honor the legacy of Haiti's fight for freedom, helping to foster unity and mutual respect among all our residents. And whereas the city of Spokane encourages all residents to attend Haitian Community Day on January 6th, 2025 at City Hall to celebrate Haitian culture, history, and contributions through cultural events and activities organized by the local Haitian community, this event commemorates Spokane's commitment to diversity, promoting equity, and acknowledging the histories and achievements of all its communities. Now therefore, I, Lisa Brown, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the people of Spokane, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as Haitian Independence Month in Spokane and encourage all residents to join in commemorating this important observance by celebrating the history, culture, and enduring spirit of the Haitian people.
Thank you. Now Katia, before I have you come back and speak, I'm going to have Marcella and Weijin come and bless us with a song.
May you stand for the Haitian National Anthem. Pour le pays, pour les ancêtres, marchons unis, marchons unis. D'un orin, point de traite, du sol, soyons seuls maîtres. Marchons unis, marchons unis, pour le pays, pour les ancêtres. Marchons, marchons, marchons unis, pour le pays, pour les ancêtres.
Thank you, Marcella and Weijin. Now Katia, if you'd like to come and have a few words. And she is the Director of the Creole Resources.
Good evening, Council President, Member of the City Council, and fellow community members. My name is Katia Jasmine, and I'm honored to stand before you today as the Executive Director of Creole Resources, a community-driving organization dedicated to supporting the Haitian community in Spokane. For the past year, Creole Resources has focused on providing safe haven for local Haitians to connect, share cultural experiences, and access resources. We work to assist individual in navigating challenges such as housing, language barrier, and job placement, all aimed to fostering integration into Spokane. We want to express gratitude to Mayor Brown, the City Council, and the resident of Spokane. Your welcoming spirit has made an impact on our local Haitian community. Despite some hurtful comment on social media, the overwhelming sense of belonging we feel here is a statement to Spokane's inclusivity and commitment to building a city where everyone can have access and participate in civic process. Thank you to other refugee and multi-ethnic groups who call Spokane home, such as Thrive, Mia, Refugee and Immigrant Connection, Manzanida, Spokane House, ANHPI, and so many more. Thank you to local organizations like Spokane Alliance, Teamster, Puron Pudus, who are actively supporting pathways to job and trade, which not only benefits Spokane economy, but also help address the workforce shortage. As Haitians integrate into the community, we bring with us the spirit of resilience and the understanding that freedom must be upheld and defended. Recent violence of freedom in Haiti have affected many Haitian refugees who now call Spokane home. This has entrained an appreciation for the freedom we all share here. We ask the city to continue investing tax dollar in things that benefit all residents, such as safety for all citizens, clean water, well-mintened streets, and beautiful parks. Together, we can uphold those shared values. Thank you for the recognition, Haitian Independence Day, the importance of freedom we all share, and the contribution of our local Haitians that call Spokane home. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight, and please, don't let this be the last time that we see you. I have one more thing, but I want to give a shout out to my Gonzaga Prep students. Raise your hands. Thank you for joining us. Starting young, starting young. I have a moment of Council President privilege. We have an anniversary milestone to recognize this evening, and on behalf of the entire City Council, we would like to congratulate Councilmember Michael Cathcart on five years of service. I'm going to have his wife Vina and Atlas come on down. And you might know him as the council member who never missed a vote or by his Las Vegas origin story on how his path to becoming a Spokane council member began. You might also know him by his trusty blue backpack, but, which I understand, will be put in a glass case somewhere here at City Hall as he was gifted a new green one, which I have suggested we have embroidered for him. We are also, Councilmember Cathcart, happy to acknowledge your years on council as a steady thinker, a dedicated public servant, and someone who has brought positive change to City Hall and Spokane. Your advocacy for Council District One is remarkable. And as the two members of this body who spent their first year in office during the COVID lockdown, that's where Michael and I bonded, I can personally attest to Councilmember Cathcart's work ethic and his unwavering determination to pass a balanced city budget. I also again like to recognize Councilmember Cathcart's family, who is with us tonight because we all know it takes a great support system and family sacrifices to make this work possible. When we started, Atlas was not part of the program, but he is now. What a joy. His wife Vina, Atlas, and his mother Kelly. Is Kelly with us tonight? Kelly, where are you? Back in the back. Stand up, mom. Moms get all the credit. So Councilmember Cathcart, congratulations on five years of this important work. I look forward to your continued contributions and success in representing District One.
Well, this was not expected, but I certainly appreciate it, and I really appreciate the words. Thank you so very much. It means quite a bit. I mean, I think you encapsulated quite a bit of who I am and how I think, but the other thing I'd want to say is it's a five-year anniversary for me, but it's also a five-year anniversary for my assistant Shay Blackwell, who is sitting out down here on the front seat. And I have been very privileged. Not every council member is able to keep an assistant for their entire duration, and so five years in, I am really blessed to have such a great person helping out in my office. And so she's just done a great job and has served District One incredibly well. So I appreciate the kudos, but honestly, a lot of the work is done by staff, our staff members like Shay. And so if we could just give her another round of applause, I'd appreciate it. And lastly, I just want to thank, I had no idea that my wife and Kido were coming down here tonight. So I just thank you guys for being here. Atlas, it's nice to see you.
No words.
And I, again, I just appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. All right, on to our business of the evening. Mr. Byrd, do we have any public comments on the consent agenda for tonight?
Did you want to do appointments first? Did you want to do appointments first?
Yes, I'm sorry. Boards and commission appointments. So would we like to take them all together, or would you like to take them individually? Is there any? Because it's the Ethics Commission, one appointment, the Airport Board, one appointment, the Tourism and Culture Investment Committee, six reappointments, and the Human Rights Commission, two reappointments. And we do have one public comment before we get there from Chris Wall. Is Chris Wall with us? I do not. Is he online? Okay, any council commentary? In that case, if there's no objection, Councilmember Bingle.
I'll say something quickly to former Senator Andy Bilig.
Citizen.
That's right, citizen now Andy Bilig. This is not how retirement works, but I think you're going to do a great job on the Airport Board. Glad to have you still a part of something, so.
I'd just like to thank all the ones who have stepped up to serve in our community. With that being said, can I get a motion to approve the Boards and Commission appointments?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Those appointments are approved. Thank you. Now on to the consent agenda. And we have three public comments. First will be Will Hewings, then Chris Wall if he's in the house, and then Justin Holler.
Good evening, Happy New Year. My name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown Spokane. I express my strong opposition to OPR 2025-0008, the so-called Hot Spotters Community Care Coordination Contract between the city of Spokane and consistent care services. This contract sponsored by council members Wilkerson, Zepone, and Klitsky claims to address the opioid crisis by identifying and managing up to 50 high utilizers of services conducting case rounds and holistically addressing barriers to care. However, I see this proposal as another wasteful expenditure that won't solve the growing opioid problem in Spokane. Let's be honest, about what's happening downtown in my neighborhood where I live. Fentanyl use has skyrocketed under Lisa Brown's administration, turning areas like the Rid Path into infested zones of drug activity. Every day, I see people smoking fentanyl off of foil. And I see homeless, I see people dying. And you just celebrated Haitian Independence Day. I wonder what they would think of America where they come to the land of the free and this is what they see. It's embarrassing. As a veteran, I'm embarrassed. I mean, it's just disgusting. But you guys need to do something, so I'm against this.
Thank you, Will. Is Chris Wall? If not, we'll go to Justin Holler?
Justin Holler, District One. Regarding 002, the $500 settlement, why are we rewarding criminal spouses for their behavior? I don't get that. And regarding 003, as far as the climate change board, what climate change? Are they paid positions? How many people are on this board?
So Justin, you are speaking, we were speaking to the consent agenda. You have gone over to the legislative agenda.
My bad. What about $375,000 for the opioid hotspot?
You can speak to that.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, I forgot my standard line, "I do not consent." Most of these things are done against our will. Most of these things are not voted on. Most of these things are by committee, and it's been five to two on just about everything for the last 10 years. And then you blame one of them for it. It's disgusting and despicable. As far as $375,000 for an opioid hotspot, can we find the drug dealers? Someone's selling the drugs in this town. I think Spokane News mentioned, I could be wrong, it was either 324 or 375. A lot of opioid overdoses. And that means someone sold those drugs for someone to overdose on. You know, you can't sell the amount of drugs being sold at Robin Canes' crack dens without someone looking the other way. Maybe look into that.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart, then Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of an oral amendment relating to Consent Agenda Item 13A.
I'll second.
And the motion that I intend to make is to strike check 801-36086, which is a payment to Lawrence B. Stone Properties in the amount of $221,515.92. The intent being that council has not had a conversation on this expense, nor has council had the opportunity to vote, which I believe we should. But putting that aside, there hasn't been a single discussion about this, and it's a pretty big financial commitment or decision that we're making. And so I may not be against the decision to completely pull out of our lease at track. In fact, I'm probably very for it. But that is something, with the power of the purse being in the hands of this body, it is something that we should be deliberating, and we shouldn't be told about after the fact.
So the motion is taken to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Abstention? Okay, the rule has been suspended, and Councilmember Cathcart's is to withhold check number...
I'll second if that's the motion.
Until council has been briefed on the decision-making.
So, actually, you're asking for a deferral?
Well, we're just striking it. Yeah, I don't think we can defer.
Okay, all right. It's been moved in second. Councilmembers Zepone.
Yeah, we had briefing earlier today where we had the opportunity to ask questions about the briefing material, so I feel like we had adequate opportunity for this type of stuff, and I don't think it's necessary for right now. I do not like the price tag, but I do believe that the administration has been clear that they're moving towards closing Track Shelter. We've talked about that as a council. We have talked about ending the lease, so this is not anything abnormal to me. The price I complained about when we got into the lease at the first time, originally, I even suggested we purchase the building, and I think if we were selling the building right now, we'd actually be making a profit rather than losing money. But that was not the will of the previous administration, so I don't think this is anything that warrants any further delay. I think we can move forward and close this chapter for the citizens and taxpayers.
Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily that Councilmember Kat Cart disagrees, but I won't speak for him. I think it's just the idea of if we control the power of the purse, which we do, and we have rules about how much can be spent without council approval, I think, not, I think, I know this exceeds that amount, and so, I think what Councilmember Kat Cart is bringing up is, should this have been something that comes before the council? And I think there's a good argument for that. And so, I don't know that, you know, there's even a ton of disagreement of, you know, track and its future, but it just comes down to, you know, the separation of powers. And if we are, again, the policymaking body, if we are the, you know, the body tasked with controlling the dollars, then I think it's a fair point to say this should have come before us for a $230,000 price tag.
Councilmember Kat Cart.
Fully agree with Councilmember Bingo. And in fact, I mean, there's other uses potentially that that building could be utilized for, the Track Facility, but we really just have not had a broad conversation on what those uses might be. Some, I'll be pretty frank, I mean, we were having a lot of robust conversations about this about a year ago, as to whether or not this could be used as either an extension to scraps, or if we were to move forward with our own animal control, that it could be utilized for that purpose. So, again, I'm not saying that that's happening with that facility, but these are discussions that have been had, and suddenly to be surprised with, oh, by the way, we've already made this decision without any council input, I just disagree with. And I think that the code is pretty clear, anything over $50,000 should come to council. I think there's some legalese arguments that perhaps because in the lease it allows for us to terminate, there's some ability for the administration to do it on their own. Regardless, council should be briefed, and we should have some discussion on this first. That's my point. I will, 80% likelihood, I would support this. I want to have those conversations first.
Councilmember Navarrete.
I do agree with Councilmember Kat Cart. I know there were talks, but there was not a price on what that was going to be. Also, the question I have, where is the money going to be paid? From what budget? I don't think that was discussed, or we know where it's coming from. Where's the money?
Any other council commentary? Councilmembers Zepone.
Yeah, I would just say a delay means that we're actually just sitting and paying rent for an empty building that we're not using. This is what was approved in the contract when we signed the lease originally, and this is the out, to get out of it. If we don't, we have to continue paying for that building, and we're not using that building. So, it's actually cheaper for us to end this lease as quickly as possible and get out as quickly as possible. I don't remember the funding source exactly where that would be coming from.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I think we can solve this by just getting those questions resolved next week and tee this up for next Monday. The thing is us doing our due diligence, you know, my understanding with the wind down with Track, the state allocating money to help with that wind down, I think that was one of the sources of funds that was on the table, but still, there are some questions that I think remain, and this did, I had more questions after briefing, unfortunately. There's timing with the holiday break and other things, I think, that came up, so I think that we're all in pretty, pretty strong alignment. We can get there next Monday.
Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, I would say in fairness, what Councilmember Zepone is saying is not inaccurate, right? I mean, you know, the things that he advocated for purchasing the building, he's not wrong on that, you know, and I am sympathetic to the argument too, that in the approval of the contract, I think that this could be there. I'm not saying he's wrong or right in this. I think it just, if there are concerns by council members, I think it makes sense for us to delay for a week, get those questions answered, and then, you know, move forward with it. And so, it's not, it's not as if Councilmember Zepone is wrong. I think he's right on a lot of what he's saying, but a week, I don't think is going to hurt us.
So, Councilmember Kat Cart.
Sorry, last thing, and it was mentioned earlier that we could have discussed this earlier, and this is very true, and I take full responsibility. I did not read through the claims and payments. One of our staff members did, and that's where we caught this. And it wasn't until after the meeting that I understood what had happened. So, that's the reason, otherwise, I absolutely would have brought it up earlier today.
Councilmember Klitsky.
I do feel like we kind of knew this was coming, we just didn't know what the buyout amount would be, and we suppose we could have looked that up ourselves in the contract. I wasn't on council when this whole deal was done, but I remember as a citizen being very frustrated with the price tag of this building. We were paying a ton of money for it, and I'm very eager to see us get out of this lease. So, of course, I'll go along with deferring it for a week, but I really hope we get this done. I really think this is using up a lot of taxpayer dollars, and I think most people are pretty unhappy with it.
So, my right question, Mr. Wright, is procedurally, then, how do we just extract this one warrant out of this?
Yes, I think the motion's been articulated adequately, so.
So, it's been moved. We said deferral, but Councilmember Kat Cart did not say that term.
He just said removal. I think that's fine, and the administration can just understand that they can add it to the agenda next week.
Okay, that's right. So, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, did you get that, Ms. Fisher? Have clarity on that? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye in support of the motion.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's?
No.
Abstentions? That is pulled. Thank you. And then, Councilmember Bingo would like to take number 10, which is the Consistent Care Service Contract separately. Did you want to speak to her, or just vote on it separately? Okay. So, all those in favor of number 10, the Consistent Care Services, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's?
No.
Abstentions? That pass. Now, back to the rest of the consent agenda. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Abstentions to consent agenda is passed. On to the legislative agenda, Ms. Fisher, please.
Resolution 2025-1 declaring ABB Industrial Automation and Power Generation Portland, Oregon, a sole-source provider and authorizing the city to enter into a contract for service and support for the digital control systems for the City of Spokane Waste and Energy Facility to be used on an as-needed basis for a five-year period, approximately $270,000 annually without public bidding.
We have one public comment. Chris Wall. Do not see Mr. Wall. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-2 approving settlement of the claim against the city in the matter of McLaughlin versus City of Spokane, $500,000.
We have several public comments. We have Anwar Peace, and then we have Sunshine Wigan.
My name is Anwar Peace, a 24-year police accountability expert, and I support the city settling cases like this of officer-involved shootings for the sake of the families, and it should be settled as quickly as possible. As for the Bradley case and this $500,000 settlement, this is an awful low number, especially for wrongful death caused by police bullets. This low settlement amount doesn't make sense to me, because the two officers that killed Mr. Bradley were also involved in a 2019 officer-involved shooting of David Novak, in which the city settled with the Novak family $4 million 17 days after Mr. Bradley was killed. So, I'm having a hard time understanding why the city believes two years ago, a person's life was valued at $4 million, but with this Bradley settlement, the city is now saying a person's life is only $500,000 to the city. What has changed in these two years for the city to devalue a human soul that was killed at the hands of police? On Friday, the sheriff's office announced a $500,000 settlement with a person that had been wrongly arrested. So, the county believes a wrongful arrest is worth $500,000, but the city believes a wrongful death and a wrongful arrest equal the same thing. Meanwhile, the city continues to increase spending multi-millions of dollars to outside Seattle law firm in order to defend officers that have killed, have killed, and to address the countless lawsuits filed by these impacted families. The Seattle law firm doesn't care about getting justice for the Spokane people. In fact, the last time the Seattle law firm went to trial in one of these cases, the judge in the case fined that Seattle law firm $10,000 for hiding the officer's HR files from the court. Just found out earlier today, the same Seattle law firm in 2016 did the exact same thing in King County and was fined $36,000. Due to the tactics of the Seattle law firms, they have been intentionally denying justice for these impacted families, who these families have not filed these lawsuits to get rich. No, these families have filed these lawsuits to find some sort of truth about their loved ones who died at the hands of police, since always the police narrative is devoid of the truth. I hope, the hope of these impacted families is for the city to understand their pain and change the police culture, so SPD isn't the third deadliest police force in the nation, which I've just experienced eight days ago, and I'll talk about that later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anwar. Sunshine?
I think any day that a life is lost is a bad day for anyone on any side of anything. And I just want to say that my heart's with that family, because any kind of loss is tragic. So, on this, a lot of my friends that I've talked to were very confused. Where do they come up with the money for something like this when we do settle? And I think it's important to point out that this is a lot of insurance factors and things like that, because a lot of people think it comes out of our taxpayer money, our pockets and things like that. I just want to say, whatever result we have in this situation, I just would hope that we have strong minds in anything we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown Spokane. So, I express my strong opposition to Resolution 2025-0002, which proposes settling with Sarah McLaughlin for $500,000 over the death of her fiance, Robert Bradley. This resolution sends a dangerous message that even when our law enforcement officers act justifiably based on evidence and in self-defense, the City of Spokane will buckle under pressure and hand over taxpayers' money to avoid litigation. Let's be clear, the Spokane County Prosecutor Larry Haskell conducted a thorough investigation and determined that the two officers involved were justified in their actions. The evidence is irrefutable. Robert Bradley was armed. Body camera footage corroborates the officer's account, showing that Bradley's actions put their lives in immediate danger. Ballistic testing confirms his gun was loaded and chambered at the time. These facts leave no doubt that the officers acted in self-defense, and I applaud them for their quick and decisive actions in what was clearly a life-threatening situation. So, why are we entertaining a $500,000 settlement? By settling, we are undermining the integrity of our law enforcement and sending a chilling message to the brave men and women who protect us, even when they follow protocol, the city will not stand by you. This just isn't about money, it's about principles. Spokane cannot afford to keep paying out these frivolous lawsuits. The city is already struggling financially, yet we're seeing a pattern of payouts to avoid conflict. What precedence does this set? Will the city be just as quick to settle with Sean Foote or Matt Shea when their lawsuits come knocking? And it's for millions and millions. I want to hear, I want to, I haven't heard, how about Mayor Neideen Woodward? What about that lawsuit? I emphasize with Ms. McLaughlin's loss, losing a loved one is tragic, but the facts do not support her claims. Her fiance made dangerous choices that forced the officer's hands. Common sense tells us pointing a weapon at law enforcement on your own property or anywhere else will result in serious consequences. Sometimes that means being shot. And like I said, it was proven. So, why are we giving away money like this?
Thank you, Will. Next is Jim Ley, and after Jim will be Justin Holler.
Good evening. My name's Jim Ley. Wow. I want to first say that there are some people here that are extremely ignorant about the facts of this case. This investigation was a sham. Larry Haskell has never found a single officer-involved shooting as unjustified. He has found them justified every single time. So, don't ever believe whatever he says as being justified. That's just his rubber stamp. This just keeps happening over and over again. And what happened with Robert Bradley was unacceptable. I support the settlement. In fact, it should be doubled. We are not seeing a change in the police culture at all. We just had the most police shootings in years in Spokane. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. In fact, what we should do with the settlement is to help pay for it, we should garnish the wages of Officer Johnson and Walker, and maybe Chief Hall, until it's paid off. Maybe they'll learn that they just can't go in and start shooting. If you watch the video, they went in there, and they just started dumping rounds into Robert Bradley. As far as them having a gun, they have no proof that he was ever holding a gun. In fact, if you watch the body cam, you will find that not once was a gun mentioned when they ran up to him and started shooting him without knowing what was going on. The only time they've said gun was when Johnson goes over himself later on, after somebody else was working on Robert Bradley. They open up a door, and he says, "There's that effing gun. I knew I saw it." He lied. It was a shotgun that was laying inside. He never saw a gun. So, we should pay this out. We should double it. We should do everything we can to stop these shootings, because they keep happening over and over. And we have the deadliest police force, not the deadliest, third, let me make that clear, third deadliest police force in the nation. It's unacceptable. We also need to have public meetings where the public can ask questions after every shooting, because we get locked out. When there is a press conference about the findings of the case, we are not allowed in. In fact, we are physically held away from those meetings. We are not allowed to attend or ask questions. The city deserves a right to be able to come in here and ask questions after every shooting. This most recent shooting with Joshua Musselman, we should be having a meeting for the public to come and find out what was going on to be able to voice their concerns and their questions, and the city should address it. The public is shut out, and they shouldn't be. This is a terrifying thing when our police department is just killing our neighbors. We need answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next is Justin Holler.
Still Justin Holler, still District One. I think we should let it play out in court. It's what court's for. I don't think we should offer... I don't think we should offer settlement willy-nilly. $500,000 for a life is either not enough or way too much, depending on who it is. You know, I mean, how many times has this person been arrested? How many times has this person been let go? How many cases of criminals have been let go time and time again after multiple felonies? It's very disturbing that Lisa Brown, as the state legislator, created this lawless atmosphere we're now all enjoying, and said, "You know what? We'll just let criminals go. We don't have anywhere to put them, so just let them go." And if you call Crime Checker, if you call 911, the criminal is out before the shift is over. How debilitating is that to cops? They're overworked, they're understaffed, and the morale is lower than ever. You yourself, Betsy, say, "Oh, no, I don't want to help catch a criminal." I'm like, "What? Like, you don't want to help catch a murderer? That's diabolical." You know? That's what the cops said, you know? And it's just very frustrating that someone can be arrested multiple amounts of times, have multiple felonies, and nothing happens. I myself have had as many as $13,000 worth of traffic tickets, because I like to go fast. I used to have faster cars. I slowed down a little bit in my older age. But you know what? As arrogant as I am, as big as a sarcastic twit and an insolent dog as I am, I've never been shot. You know why? Because I pulled over. I didn't try and outrun them, though I could have, probably, but I didn't. I obeyed the law once I get caught. I'm like, "Okay, you got me." I didn't move fast and get all herky-jerky. I got my license, registration, insurance, here you go, sorry, I'll take my lumps. That's what it is. But if you have a criminal, who's a career criminal, you don't reward them by giving their spouse money. No one gave me any money when my old lady got killed by a drunk driver. Didn't see a single dime. So I'm sick of criminals getting away with stuff. It really frustrates me. And for $200,000, the police chief should be Batman. He should be catching criminals and locking them up, not letting them go. And the five of you consistently just go, "Oh, no, it's okay. Let's give everyone the second chance, second chance, second chance." Well, how many second chances do you get? I guarantee you, if someone pulled a gun on you, you'd want to defend yourself. If someone just got herky-jerky, you'd be like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa." Karen Stratton was all upset that I got loud, loud. She was like, "Oh, scary voices. Oh, you're loud, you're aggressive, you're angry." Well, guess what? What if you're in the position where someone pulls a gun or just reaches for something? You're going to go, "Oh, I have to defend myself."
Thank you, Justin. And once again, it's Chris Waller in the house. Not seeing him. Any council commentary? Seeing none? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-3, clarifying the lengths of the initial terms on the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Board.
We have several public comments. We'll start with Charlie Bowkamp.
Hey, I got a pretty loud voice, so I'm just going to start right now. You can start in my three minutes. Just in the name of transparency, it's a fake mustache. I got on a fake mustache, and this is not my real accent. But I just want to speak tonight regarding climate resilience, sustainability. I think a good idea would be to employ some of the homeless people if we're going to talk about sustainability, whatever that word is, to pick up litter and give them kickbacks via money. I think that's a good idea if we're talking about that. I think we could get them into five different groups. A group that has been sober for a day, that go out with a crew. A group that wants to get sober but can't even try. They just don't want to. They don't want to get sober. But we're going to take them out anyway and go pick up a litter and give them food for the day. I think this is a good idea to get, you know, we talked about all the drug addiction down here and everything like that, and I see it, and everybody sees it, and it's sad, and I get it. I've been drug addicted, but I wear a fake mustache now to help me with my drug addiction and alcoholism, and I kind of go into a secondary accent to kind of keep myself straight, if you will. Because it's tough to handle the world out there sober. It really is. I mean, come on now. I mean, we drive out here, we got insane amounts of fast drivers, LED lights in our faces. Things have been changing so fast in our society, I don't think we step back and really kind of look at like how quickly things have changed. You know, 10 years ago, we had incandescent lights, we had warm brown lights. Now everybody's trying to drive as fast as they can, because these LED lights are insanely in their face. You can't tell which way a car is going, you can't even see the blinker. You know, I mean, I understand the drug addiction. I understand the escape-ism. It's easy to escape, it's easy to isolate, be at home, getting drunk, stoned, whatever you want to do, and to avoid the fact you ain't got no money. To avoid the fact that you're not liking the way that we're operating and everybody's carrying cell phones, and they're not talking to one another, not looking each other in the eye, and whatever. There's a lot of stuff going on in this world. And I just think that we need to approach the homelessness on a level that, with some compassion, understand just because they're crazy and out of their minds with just pure drug through the roof. I've seen some of them, they like to dance. I get them out there dancing. Maybe we need to approach them with dance, because that's a basis of humanity. And I must say, today we had some dance music. I'm going to talk about that later at Open Forum, and it's the most fun I've had before a meeting ever, ever, right here. We had dance music out here. Let's continue it, let's keep going with all this, okay? Thank you for listening, I appreciate it. Ciao.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next is Justin Holler, and then Will Hewings. We're speaking on the climate resiliency.
I'd like to see if the people in Pompey cared about the environment when they had lava in their living room. Lava, you know, the hot magma stuff, you know, lava in their living room? Yeah. My name's Justin Holler, I'm still District One. How many people are on this board? How many are on a paid position? How many are on a fast track to a paid position? And what's this going to cost us all? You know? I mean, I ride my bike 3,000 to 5,000 miles a year, and I don't really care about the environment, yet most of you want 27 more miles of bike lanes, yet most of you don't ride. And how are you going to ride on ice? You know? And we spent a million dollars on equipment that I've never seen it yet, and $50,000 on maintenance before you even got it. This climate change thing, it takes so much money, it takes so much, it's exhausting. It really is. You know, you buy electric cars, you got four different types of plugins, can't coordinate one type of plugin? You know, Tesla's got adapters now, you can plug in stuff to other adapters to use superchargers now, you know? I mean, just this climate agenda, I mean, what if, Sideshow Bob wasn't in office as a governor, what if King Inslee wasn't in office? Would you guys still be behind this? Would you still be beholden to the agenda if someone wasn't shoving it down your throat with a garden hose? You know? Seriously, how much money do we have to spend on this stuff? How many committees, how many wasted hours do we have to use? You know, I've never seen anyone ride a bike here. Here. You know, no one's rode a bike that I know of. You know, it just, you know, who of you has an electric car? I bet none of you have an electric car, because you're not beholden to the agenda yourself, personally, but with your money, you don't buy it, but with our money, you buy it. Yeah, I remember, I'm old enough to remember when, for lack of a better phrase, they were called meter maids back in the day, probably because they're predominantly female, not judging, but they're these little three-wheel scooters. They look like motorcycles, and then they went to the little enclosed ones. Now we have full-blown electric cars. How big of a vehicle do you need to have to give us a ticket for parking? I mean, seriously? It's a waste of money. Let them walk. Let them roller skate, let them ride a bike. You know? This climate change thing is a complete hoax. You know, why are billionaires buying beachfront property if the ocean levels are going to rise? Banks would not lend money if the oceans were going to rise. It's cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs, and you know it.
Thank you, Justin. Will?
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown Spokane. I cannot support Resolution 2025-0003, a resolution clarifying the initial term lengths for appointees to the so-called Climate Resilience and Sustainability Board. The problem isn't just the technicalities of term lengths, it's the existence and purpose of this board itself. The board claims to provide advice and recommendations on achieving Spokane's sustainability and climate goals, but let's be honest about what this really is. A platform for Lisa Brown supporters to push her extreme leftist policies under the guise of addressing climate change. Take, for example, the appointment of Bob Lutz, a name that should raise alarm bells for anyone who cares about integrity and sound leadership. His appointment wasn't about making Spokane more sustainable or resilient, it was about rewarding loyalty to Lisa Brown and her political allies. This board isn't composed of impartial experts or community representatives like myself. It's filled with individuals who share Lisa Brown's radical agenda. 12 positions have been filled with mayor's appointees, all rubber stamped by the city council, and every single one of them is a supporter of Lisa Brown. This is a blatant political cronyism masquerading as governance. What makes Resolution 2025-003 particularly frustrating is its focus on clarifying the initial term lengths of these appointees as if that's what matters most to Spokane residents. The resolution attempts to clean up a mess caused by the appointment process, where it wasn't even clear which appointees had two-year terms and which had three-year terms. But who cares about term lengths when the board itself is the problem? This board isn't working for the people of Spokane, it's working for Lisa Brown. And let's talk about priorities. Instead of obsessing about climate change nonsense, why isn't Lisa Brown creating a board to address the fentanyl overdose epidemic ravaging Spokane? Fentanyl, meth, and aluminum foil litter everywhere for drug use are far from immediate threats to our community and the environment. Then the speculative impacts of climate change. So yeah, go by the Rid Path and see how dirty and filthy and dirty, like the earth should feel ashamed. It's disgusting.
Thank you, Will. Just appointment clarity, none of the people who serve on the city's boards and commissions are paid. It is all volunteerism. Any council commentary? Seeing none? Prepare to vote. Thank you. That now brings us to Open Forum. We have two minutes to speak on any topic. Please address all your comments to the chair. Please be respectful of your comments. And Mr. Bird? We will start with Mark Aaron, Aaron Mark, and then Christopher Savage. Is Aaron Mark in the room or online? Next, we'll go to Christopher Savage.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Christopher Savage, and I live in District Three. Tonight, I would like to share an experience and tie it into what I have learned in my travels across Spokane. After the holidays, when coming home from dropping off a family member at the Spokane International Airport, I decided to take the Walnut Street exit when returning home on I-90. What I saw at the stoplight before continuing through the city broke my heart. Not only did I see several individuals freezing in the highway underpass, but also the large flickering sign of Spokane with several lights out, making it look like you're entering a dilapidated city rather than a beautiful community that I grew up in. This is what welcomes most people coming into our city, putting into question whether Spokane is a viable city for our youth, elderly, and prospective families. The reason I bring this up is that this experience fully brought into perspective what I've been hearing from business owners across Spokane. Do you know that when Spokane citizens bring in their family, friends, and preferred guests into our city, they won't take the Walnut Street exit, they won't take the Lincoln Street exit, they certainly won't take the Division Street exit, and we all know why? They go all the way down to Hamilton Street exit into the University District, because that is the only entrance into our city from I-90 coming west that many people feel comfortable using, as that is the only transportation corridor our decaying city has that looks like it hasn't been affected by the rampant drug use or the increasing amount of homeless that are ending up on our streets and on our stoops, hiding what is endemic across our city. We need competent policies coming out of City Hall that aren't making our city worse. It seems that the current legislation coming from City Council is making Spokane a city for some and not for all.
Thank you. Next, we will have Sunshine Wigan, and after Sunshine, we will have Anwar Peace.
Didn't work last time. Sunshine Wigan from Spokane. So I call Crime Checker, because they got fire pits out there, they're burning fires against the Rid Path. And the lady goes, "Oh, yeah, we got a call prior to you, you're the second person to call." Then, of course, Will called once. I told Will, "Hey, you got fires outside your place." Another thing, we have an outreach team, great outreach team, they just do free feeds, random kids that do it. Well, now, we have that store out there, and people are congregating right there, obviously, for obvious reasons. Anyways, so, whole point being, we're having a free feed there now, right where this store's trying to make money off selling food. So now we have free feeds going on down there, because we're congregating down there, so we've made a scene, and the scene's happening. And then you got, of course, your paramedics coming, and the fentanyl overdoses and seizures and everything else under the sun. We call, we call, we call, we get no response. The cops sitting there the other day, they're just sitting in the parking lot across the street watching. Very rarely do they get out of their cars, very rarely do they ever even say anything to these people. But yet, we gave a ton of citations on this block when it was Expo 74 we were celebrating. Where the hell did that presence go? This presence that you guys said you were going to help us move these people? We need to find a place where it's okay, a zone for these people to be in, so that we can go in there and treat them. You know, we can't just have them hanging out in front of the Rid Path like this. That is a total disgrace to that store that is trying to make it right there. It's insult that this is even being allowed to happen, that there's a free feed right outside of it. And I'm not saying don't feed the homeless, or don't treat the people that have addiction problems, et cetera. I'm just saying that is a huge slap in the face. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Anwar?
Good evening. My name is Anwar Peace. I am a 24-year police accountability expert. And eight days ago, my home was shot at by eight to 12 police bullets. Police killed my upstairs neighbor, Joshua Musselman. Every day, I walk out my front door, and I see the bullet holes that are 18 inches from where my front door was. I was home during the shooting, and I thank my neighbor for calling me, because she stopped me from going out on that front porch and also getting harmed. I have been telling this council body for years that there is a problem with this police department. that there is a problem with this police department. Second, third ranked, fifth ranked, whatever you want to say ranked, we're killing a lot of people. Nobody's done any studies on why we're having this happen, which I find very interesting from a council body that could make that happen. Study how these police shootings are happening. Study the lack of resources that Joshua Musselman, my upstairs neighbor, received. Same gentleman that attacked me earlier this month, by the way. Police filed no charges on him doing that. There was missed opportunities time and time again. Frontier Behavioral Health was the one that was paying his rent there, yet never dealt with him. Behavioral Health units never came in the 20, 30 times my neighbors have called for assistance for that gentleman. Joshua Musselman deserved to be alive today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anwar. Next is Earl Moore, and then after Earl, Debbie Novak.
Thank you, City Council. My name is Earl Moore. I live in the Third District. I want to share with you the definition of prayer. It's a solemn request for help or an expression of thanks addressed to God. Our Father and our God, we praise you for your goodness to our nation, giving us blessings far beyond what we deserve. Yet we know all is not right with America. We deeply need a moral and spiritual renewal to help us meet the many problems we face. Convict us of our sin, help us to turn to you in repentance and faith. Set our feet, set our feet on the path of righteousness and peace. We pray today for all of our leaders. Give them the wisdom to know what is right and the courage to do it. You have said, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." May this be a new era for America as we humble ourselves and acknowledge you alone as our Savior and Lord. This we pray, in your holy name, amen. This is a prayer from Billy Graham I wanted to share with you. And I pray for you, I pray for our council, that you would get a better understanding of this community. I pray for you for unity. And I tell you, I will be standing in the gap every day of the week. We pray for our city council, every one of you. And I end with, "I support our police." Thank you.
Amen. After Debbie, we'll have John Hancock.
Wow. Been quite the meeting. Council President Wilkerson, council members. I wanted to, I'm Debbie Novak, and I wanted to come and talk to you today about a serious matter. And it's in regards to review boards. We have deadly force review boards, we have use of force review boards, and then we have pursuit review boards, and it seems like there's a, there might be another one I'm forgetting. I went to the ombudsman meeting that they had in November, and there's a report that they handed out, and so it's here, or you could certainly go and watch the video as well of the meeting. One of the cases that was quite serious was a juvenile that got mistaken for a perpetrator, and he wasn't, he was the victim. And he was on crutches. And so not only did this, in this case, did this juvenile get assaulted by a gang, he also ended up getting assaulted by a police officer. Maybe you guys heard about that. But the reason I bring that particular case up, because there's many cases like that that happen, is that the sergeant on that review board, and I quote, "He said, 'Up to lethal force can be de-escalation.'" That really bothers me, and it should bother everybody on this council. Up to lethal force can be de-escalation. And then the other people on that review board also agreed with that statement and backed that statement up. That's wrong. This is why Spokane is ranked so high. We have a de-escalation problem, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Is John Hancock in the room, or is he online? All right, then we'll go to Jim Lehegan. Jim?
Good evening. My name is Jim Lehegan. I want to make it clear, I do support the police, but I also believe in police accountability. The recent shooting of Joshua Musselman is very upsetting. We need to have public comment, we need to have a briefing on it where we can ask questions. We don't get that opportunity ever. The police chose to bring an AR platform consistent with a 223 bullet to shoot Mr. Musselman. This is a bullet that can penetrate walls. This was being shot at at an apartment complex. They had total disregard for public safety. They did not care for anybody else's safety but themselves, and they put lives at risk. A bullet actually entered another person's apartment through the wall and could have killed her and her daughter. The bullets that they use in their handguns can mushroom and not penetrate walls. They're safer, but these officers choose to bring an AR-15 223 rifle to this. They have ballistic shields, and they don't go inside to check on the people until they feel that it's very safe. They can wait up to 20 minutes while a person bleeds out and not render any aid. I will volunteer to go in. I have, I'm a military veteran, I have combat first aid training. I will, if they have a standoff, they are more than welcome to call me, and I will go in for them, since they are too afraid to go in to check on the person they just shot. I will go in there, make sure it's clear for them, so we can get EMTs in there in a reasonable time so we can start administering first aid to the person that they just shot. Thank you.
Next is Charlie Bochamp, and then after him will be H.T. Higgins.
Thank you again for listening to me. I think we got a problem that is beyond what we can even see. I think it's involved with the entertainment that we're listening to, the food that we're eating, the garbage stuff, drive-through food that's not healthy. We've got to start thinking about our health. We've got to start thinking about what you let into your brain. I've been listening to a lot of 80s music, James Brown, Cool and the Gang, things that are real music, Madonna, stuff like that. None of this garbage digital crap that is kind of infiltrated for money. Elvis and James Brown actually were givers to their audience. They brought joy and love to their audiences. We have to stop with all the popularity of what your friends are listening to, and you got to stop trying to fit in. Quit trying to fit in with all your friends on your phones and texting all this garbage. Texting and driving, all this insanity, it's just beyond what you can possibly think of. I've lived in Europe for many, many, couple of years, and I know what's, it's the food, it's the culture, it's what we are accepting as entertainment. This entertainment is not entertainment. This drama is destroying your minds, okay? It's making this into a Hollywood movie. This is not a Hollywood movie, this is reality, this is real life, okay? And when you're, when you're, when you're emulating these people that you've never met on these screens, you don't know who they are, you're emulating them, you're looking up to them because they got a Ferrari. Who cares? Who cares? Are they healthy? Are they happy? You don't know. What are they eating? How do they take care of their community? Do they hold doors open for people? Do they do anything good? You don't know that, but you're listening to their music, you're listening to their garbage, and it's poisoning your minds. I don't listen to the radio, I don't turn the TV on. Turn the TV on once, like, once a month, once every six months. Just really think about what you let in to your body. Food, music, entertainment, okay? Listen to some James Brown, get back there, listen to some Madonna, real music. They did it in one take, one take. They put it on vinyl.
Thank you, Charlie, your time is up.
Didn't mess around with computers. Get it together, people. Thanks for listening. Ciao.
After H.T., we'll have John Hancock.
My name is H.T. Higgins. Thank you, Councilmember Cathgar, for bringing up and deferring the $230,000 payment on the track shelter. Imagine that we're paying $230,000 and it used to have over 300 beds for possibly people that are out tonight sleeping in the cold. Think about that. Though it's New Year, some things don't change. Our unhoused friends have a significant lack of warming shelter beds. As I have asked so many times, what's your plan? As I understand, the city, under Spokane Municipal Code 18.05020, will surge when the temperature is below 32 degrees. And the first line of Section 1 says, "Warming centers sufficient, sufficient to meet the shelter needs of currently unsheltered homeless individuals." Has the City Council publicly acknowledged that the city is in violation of this Spokane Municipal Code? Because there is not sufficient warming center beds available. You're in violation. I received this from the Brown administration yesterday. "We just want to let everyone know that unfortunately, we will not be surging for inclement weather beds tonight." "We understand that not activating inclement weather shelter beds can feel disheartening, especially when the weather is cold but doesn't meet the regulatory threshold of 32 degrees." "These decisions are never made lightly, and we recognize the impact they can have on individuals in need of warmth and safety." These are all words, there is no action. Excellent messaging by the administration. Let's spin this once again.
Thank you, H.T.
We care, but not enough to provide warm shelters for you.
Thank you. John Hancock? And after John, we'll have Will Hewlings.
I live about five miles west of Spokane, on Deep Creek, on the boundary between the PFAS plumes of the airport and Fairchild Air Force Base. I'm a leader of the West Plains Water Coalition. We speak for and educate hundreds of rural citizens with well water contaminated by firefighting foam since the 1970s. I urge councils serious and urgent attention to the PFAS facts for these reasons. Number one, Ecology's airport investigation has now published more than 1,000 pages of PFAS detail. Just pick a few sample pages and you'll get the idea of what that's about. Ecology has never before cleaned up anything like PFAS over this large an area, 40 square miles. PFAS is invisible, underground, harmful in parts per trillion, slow-moving, and indestructible. Number three, airports, excuse me, EPA's testing of 411 home wells at the edge of the city of Spokane shows 57% above PFAS safety limits for drinking water. Filter systems are now offered to homes in big trouble with funding from Washington Department of Health in an unprecedented example of fast-moving joint public health response. Some of these homes are inside Spokane city limits but still relying on private wells. EPA's new levels of PFAS protection are far lower than the previous standards in place at Fairchild since 2017. Our estimate is that 100 additional homes are in trouble, and the affected area may double in size. $50 million may be the low estimate of the cost for the airport cleanup. Airport chose not to accept existing state cleanup funding at around 75% of the cost because it required admission of responsibility. Number six, the FAA says the airport is on its own to comply with state regulations. Number seven, aquifer protection is required by the Growth Management Act. The 10-year draft underway will not be approved without serious attention to this requirement regarding PFAS.
Thank you, John, your time is up.
Thank you.
Will, and after Will, we'll have Sherri Barnett.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewlings and I live downtown Spokane. So I am also going to criticize Spokane Police Department. So I've lived in, lived downtown Spokane since 2019. What was once a vibrant and promising neighborhood has deteriorated into an unsafe and embarrassing shadow of what it used to be. Just steps from my front door, I'm confronted daily with scenes that no resident should have to endure. Homeless individuals camping in the street, drug addicts openly using, people armed with bats and swords and mentally unstable individuals wandering like zombies, screaming at all hours of the night, high on illegal drugs, blocking the sidewalk, constantly have to call Crime Check. I live just a few blocks from both the downtown Spokane Police Precinct and Spokane City Hall, yet despite being in the heart of where law and order should prevail, my neighborhood has became, become a lawless mess. It's a disgrace. If this chaos was happening in Lisa Brown's fancy Kendall Yards neighborhood, I guarantee Kevin Hall and his department would not, never allow it to continue unchecked. Why is it acceptable here downtown? Why is downtown residents have to live in fear while those responsible for addressing these issues turn a blind eye? The situation downtown is getting worse by the day, especially in my neighborhood. Drug addicts face no consequences for their actions, receiving a slap on the hand or a dose of Narcan instead of being held accountable. I said this before and I'll say it again, what is going to take for real action? We need officers on Foot Patrol, Public Safety Committee. That would be nice. Talk about that at the next one.
Thank you. Sherri Barnett, and after Sherri, our last speaker will be Justin Holler.
Yes, I'm Sherri Barnett. I live in Spokane. Well, I've been on this subject for a long, long time, but I think it's very appropriate, this is the 6th of January, and I watched a president be spied on, be accused falsely. I've watched his friends be put in jail. People like Steve Bannon, Peter Navarro, Rudy Giuliani. The things they've been put through are hellacious, and they're false, and they should never be put through it. It was not an insurrection. And they're still arresting people, and they haven't been properly brought up to trial. They've just been stuck in jails, and some of them have committed suicide. This nation was founded to be a nation under God, and integrity and honor and righteousness are supposed to matter. And until we get rid of the drug problem and alcohol problem and the ungodliness problem, we will not improve as a nation. Maybe you can enslave people, but that's not the way of this nation. And then we have a president who's giving the Medal of Freedom to Liz Cheney, and they appointed someone that her, their party did not want to represent them. George Soros is giving the, given the Medal of Freedom for trying to let people out of jail, murderers, and all these people are given pardons while other people who did no crimes are sitting in jail.
Thank you, Sherri, your time is up.
Thank you.
Justin Holler, and then I'm sorry, Chris Wall is also in the room. And I'll be our last speaker.
Still Justin Holler, District One. The ends justify, this is Ice T, New Jack Hustler. The ends justify the means. That's the system. I learned that in school, then I dropped out. Hit the streets, check a grip, now I got clout. I had nothing and I wanted it, you had everything and you flaunted it. Turn the needy into the greedy. With cocaine, my success came speedy.
Ice T wrote that, what, four decades ago? Over 30 years?
Over 30 years ago. The problem still exists. You're rewarding the criminal and allowing them to go free. You can't sell the amount of drugs being sold in downtown without someone looking the other way. You just can't. When someone is yelling up at 10 o'clock or later, it's not for a good reason. It's not a pizza delivery because they would have a code, or they would be waiting for their pizza delivery. When people yell up for the building for their drug dealer and a Rob McCann low-income crack den, and that's what they are, because there's no pathway to sobriety before you get in them, look downtown. Look at how many people are hanging out at these buildings, and you know what? They steal to get their drug money. And then, someone had the audacity to include District 1, downtown's problems into District 1, which I still think is deplorable, and then they didn't even have the audacity to show up, they didn't have the equipment to show up in a meeting where they were talking about redistricting map changes.
Thank you, Justin, your time is up.
Sorry that it took a minute. My mom wanted me to walk with Jesus, so I'm like, at the end of the lock, but being in a wheelchair for at least the next year, so I can do my homework and like, fix the problems and stuff. That being said, though, I'm in between, I'm not going to complain because I'm more of a solution guy, so, or at least pointing out the problem in which it really is. We got pushed into individualism, the American way was robbed before or sold out for lenders. Divide and conquer worked, right? If you look back throughout history, though, you have clues to success in bringing things back from then, especially since, since Expo '74, there was supposed to be sustainability here, right? I know where that money went, yeah, but there's a conversation for it later. By the way, the, the people who are lost and disparaged could probably find hope in like, actually bringing hope to earth by doing good works, right? The problem is the solution, the problem is actually being painted over to people who are being stricken by the problem. So, I'm about to go to rehab. Okay, I'm gonna go through what you guys have to figure out how to get off of what I'm on. Unfortunately, it's a permanent thing because I'm supposed to be on fucking pharmaceuticals, and I have a dislike for that. By the way, I'm gonna go through the trenches and figure out how you all are doing it, figure out where the flaws are, and then do it my own way, right, as soon as I get out. Meanwhile, I encourage anyone who says that the problem is okay before you get the op, take your wallet, whatever's in it, donate charity because you're gonna want it in there before you fucking, don't let, no phone, no one to contact you, right? Empty your wallet, two nights. I give you three hours before you want me to have a building. I don't even, my, so, homie over here is talking about today's rap, and then, you homie, I actually use it upon my stress levels to snap the gap. Not worried upon speaking of fact, I'm from North Dakota. You couldn't knock on wood faster, I hit it a lac because I'm supposed to. Hit it like a, well, my people did not believe in the god that-
Thank you, Chris, your time is up. Thank you. All that concludes our open forum for this evening. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So, second?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Please join us next Monday night, January 13.